I call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commissioner Commission for the month of December. Can we please have a roll call?
Feedback, sorry. Yes, good evening. Commissioner Alaski.
Here.
Commissioner Slavaker.
Here.
Commissioner Burr.
Here.
Chair Kerriat.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson. Commissioner Seidel.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
And staff we have tonight Nancy Miller, Sammy Malacan, and Dan Forth, and myself Rebecca Markwich.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to again remind all commissioners to please speak into your microphone. There's issues that things are not coming across clearly for the transcript for the meetings. So if you could talk directly into your microphone, that would be helpful for staff. Okay, we're moving on to item B, open forum. This is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the Planning Commission on any matter that does not appear on this agenda. Upon being recognized by the chair, please state your name and limit your oral statements to no more than three minutes. Matter that appear to warrant a more lengthy presentation or commission consideration be agendized for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the commission? Seeing none. Is there anyone on Zoom? Ready, okay. Moving on to reports. Report agenda item consists of any oral report from standing Planning Commission committees, an individual member of the Planning Commission and staff. Is there anyone that has a report for the commission this evening? Seeing none. We'll move on to the-
I have a report actually. Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you Chair Kerriat. I want to give you guys an update on the housing element schedule. We'll go into sort of the details of the housing element at that item, but in terms of the schedule, I thought it would be a good idea to just go over a couple of things this evening. Diet Mbattia has been working on the initial study, which is a large component of the, in a large component of that initial study is the traffic analysis. And that is subbed out to a traffic engineer, they're called Fair and Peers. Getting the modeling done in a timely manner has been difficult as their model became compromised and Fair and Peers had to rebuild the model and revalidate that use. This has pushed our timing out for the initial study to be completed. The traffic analysis feeds the air quality and the greenhouse gas components of the initial study. In the meantime, Diet Mbattia has been working on sort of the non-technical components of the initial study. And those, they'll have that to me and the committee on Friday. All of this to say is that we're, we are behind schedule. However, we are going to meet that January 1st, January 31st, 2024 state deadline of having the rezoning done. In order to meet that deadline, we are having a Planning Commission meeting on January 3rd. And thank you for your correspondence on that, we do have a quorum. And at that meeting, we'll be looking to you guys to recommend the initial study and zoning ordinance amendments to the city council. They're also, and so then we will have two city council meetings in January, one on the 16th and one on the 22nd. January 16th conflicts with our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. So I'll be sending you an update, hopefully we can have the Planning Commission meeting on January 17th instead, which is a Wednesday. And lastly, I'd just like to thank you for your patience and understanding with all of these meeting deadlines and schedules. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Do we have to open it up to the public if they have any questions? Is there anyone in the public who has any questions regarding Ms. Markwich's report? Seeing none. We'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that the Planning Commission considers to be non-controversial. Unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the Planning Commission, staff, or audience, consent calendar will be adopted by one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence as they appear below. If any member of the audience wishes to have an item removed, please raise your hand, come to the podium, state your name and which item you want removed. And if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand. So our consent calendar consists of one item, draft minutes from November 21st, 2023. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? Seeing none in the audience, anyone on Zoom?
None.
May I please have a motion?
I move to adopt the consent calendar items.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we move on to a public hearing, item number two, revised housing element.
Thank you. So as mentioned, we are behind, we're sort of not, what we noticed for is not ready. So I'm just going to give you sort of a high level overview of what Diet Mbattia is working on based on the comments from the last Planning Commission hearing and the housing committee that we've been meeting with weekly. So we are working on removing the PUD overlay zone and having a new R3, just calling it an R3 overlay. So it would be for adding incentives for contiguous parcels in that R3 zone. This change is being made to value the community members' place on the original community design with lower densities closer to the Lagoon, meaning those R2 zones. So they're coming out, we're getting rid of the PUD, we're calling it an R3 overlay zone. That will trigger map and text updates, including to Program 2F. It will also reduce the capacity for lower income units, approximately four lower and one moderate income unit. So to compensate for that, we'll have a higher share at the boardwalk to be counted toward the lower income and moderate income rent requirements. Parking reductions were assessed, but we are including them as in, they're needed for a requirement in that R3 clustering feasibility. So when you're clustering, you get those sort of added benefits. Secondly, we're looking at the inclusionary requirement. We're proposing changes to that requirement to match the town of Tiburon as part of Program 1A and to simplify other inclusionary requirements, particularly for the R3 parcels that may consolidate, right? If you are doing that sort of consolidation in that R3 cluster, you get these incentives and there'll be different inclusionary requirements. The R3 incentives will, would still be provided in exchange for a higher commitment to affordability if adjacent parcels are developed together. So only if you're doing those adjacent parcels together, you'd get sort of those incentives. If there are three parcels are developed individually, only the citywide requirements would apply. Secondly, we're looking at changing the definition for the JADUs with their junior accessory dwelling units. That would be changes to Program 1F. And we'll state that the ADU ordinance will be modified to treat existing detached living space of appropriate dimensions as a JADU if the property owner commits to making the unit available to lower income households through a long-term affordability agreement. This has, the, this change has a potential to make more JADUs available to the city. We've realized that there are a lot of these second kitchen agreements and they tend to be in separate structures. And so that's why we're sort of going down the road of amending that definition. And I can take questions if you have any, not sure I'll be able to answer them, but.
Anyone have any questions for staff? Kevin?
Just to clarify, so when you were talking about the R3 overlay, for instance, that one PUD that we were reviewing that's on beach, it was two R3s, I think, and then a couple of R2s closer to the lagoon. Are they all going to be rezoned R3 or just the, two R3s will be combined?
We're pulling out the R2 from that PUD, from both PUD overlays, right?
And we're not going to call it a PUD overlay?
No, we're removing the word PUD.
Yeah, so it's just the parcel, the beach roads.
Great. Which sort of gives itself to higher density than R2.
Can I ask a question? Is this done with the consent of the present owners of all the PU, we're not supposed to call them PU's, but all that stretch of land, or is this something the city is just going to impose?
There's been some conversations with the present owners. Typically, we, we do look for sort of an owner interest and we, we do have a letter from that owner to the extent that they've seen the details of these changes, I don't think they have yet.
Okay.
And the overlay is only if they want the additional incentives, they don't have to do that. So it's, it's an option. It's not the-
It's not a required zoning.
The inclusionary, yeah, would be required, but the overlay would be an option. And we already have a senior housing overlay in all of R3. If they make senior housing a certain percentage, they get certain benefits. So it's that kind of thing. Any other questions for staff? I, I just had one question, so on the JADU, are we saying we're only going to be able to, owners of JADUs that are detached living spaces, the only way they'll be able to legalize it to a JADU would be to make a deed restriction for low income?
Yes. But it's, right, as of right now. You know, you'll have a chance, it'll be a red, the housing element, when it comes back to you on the 3rd, will be a red line document. So it'll be clear where the changes are and it's open for more discussion at that point. So nothing's set in stone at this point.
So we'll be able to make comments on the 3rd?
Yeah.
They will be incorporated into the draft that goes to city council?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. And then all of this is, you know, kind of in the holidays, and I know it says strain on staff. It would be good if we could get things, even if it was piecemeal, especially with that initial study. You know, at least an online copy that somebody could take a look at and maybe get some advanced reading if it's possible.
Yes, I've been in discussion with the consultants about that. We're hoping to have the packet published online on the 29th of December and the paper copies coming to you guys on the 28th. Which I know is that, not that much time with the New Year's Eve holiday in there, but we're, it's a push to get it out ourselves. And this is all hinging on the initial study being ready, but the consultants, say it will be.
Okay. And those who may not be able to attend the January 3rd meeting, you can always email Rebecca your comments so that they could be incorporated, so you won't feel left out.
Yes.
Okay. I'll open it up to the public meeting, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Peter?
Hi. I'm, sorry, thank you Peter Mark. Just wanted to apologize and thank the Planning Commission for this heavy lift very late in the process. We have gone through a couple of fits and starts, so I did want to recognize the difficulty at this point in time going through the mass of this document and the particulars. And also point out that this is a point in time, meaning we're not, we expect to have this reviewed again and again. So we're, we're recognizing that, we're putting our best foot forward, we're responding to HCD on this. And, and again, just, just apologize for the, for the holiday late season, late, 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 late in the game work that we've asked of everyone on this, but, and thank you very much for the effort going forward. So we can get this back to HCD. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom?
None.
Thank you. I should have announced earlier, we're going to have a change in our lineup tonight. So number, the next project we're going to hear is 43 Peninsula. And then the project after that is going to be 46 Lagoon Road. And then the last project is going to be 15 Tamapayas. So with that change, can we have the staff report for 43 Peninsula, please?
Thank you Chair Kerriat and members of the Planning Commission. For your consideration this evening is an application for design review and revocable license for a residential addition and remodel at 43 Peninsula Road. The subject property is centrally located on a flat 7,000 square foot parcel in the R1L zoning district. The property contains a single-story home and attached garage. The project proposes a 508 square foot addition at the eastern portion of the site and a 14 square foot expansion of the dining room and an enclosure of 29 square feet beneath the roof overhang to create a larger entryway. The project would construct a new pool and spa and install an AC unit and pool pump at the eastern side yards. The project proposes a flat torch-down membrane roof above the kitchen and addition. The roof above the addition would be 11 feet 9 inches tall from existing grade. The roof above the kitchen would be raised two feet to a maximum height of 14 feet and 6 inches. Viewing the home from Peninsula Road, the garage and bedroom, number three would remain unchanged. In the background, you can see the new roofline and the living room and the addition. The addition would receive one fixed window facing Peninsula Road. Viewing the home from Belvedere Lagoon, the living room would receive a new sliding door and fixed window. The sliding door would be 19 feet long by 10 feet 4 inches tall. The project proposes a 12-foot wide by nine-foot tall sliding door at the addition as well. From the east elevation, the dining room would include a 10-foot, 10-foot 4-inch tall sliding door and fixed window as well as a sliding door and three fixed windows at the addition. And viewing the home from the west, the project would reconfigure windows at the bedroom and bathrooms and install four fixed windows at the living room. The color and material palette would include stucco walls in Benjamin Moore's feathered down color, stained wood overhang slots, doors and windows in metal clad wood and a graphite color and a flat membrane roof in a light gray color. The project proposes two types of exterior lighting fixtures, including one 5-inch tall LED wall scones located at the door of the primary bedroom and nine square flush mount LED lights set within the trellises outside the living room and primary bedroom walls. Landscaping would include star jasmine, creeping fig and roses in existing pots on the eastern side yard and regrass to six feet tall within 12-inch tall freestanding black metal planters. The project requests a revocable license to validate existing improvements within the Peninsula Road right of way. These existing improvements include landscaping, a concrete driveway, a stone walkway, and a section of wood fencing. In the R1L zoning district, rear yard setbacks are measured from the summer level high tide. The existing house encroaches into the 15-foot rear yard setback when measured from this summer level high tide. Because the home was built in 1956 prior to the city's adopted zoning ordinance, it is a legal non-conforming structure. As previously mentioned, the applicant proposes to raise this non-conforming structure two feet vertically to accommodate the new flat roof. The Elvedere Municipal Code allows pre-existing encroachments to extend into the setback so long as the vertical or horizontal extension is four feet or less from the pre-existing condition. Here, the vertical extension is consistent with the zoning ordinance as the new flat roof would be raised less than four feet. FEMA considerations, on September 10th of this year, we received a property appraisal valuing the house at 1.5 million. Construction costs must be less than 50% of this appraised value and less than 50% of the exterior walls, openings, and roofs can be demolished. The applicant resubmitted plans November of this year with the intention to remodel the home in two phases. The estimated cost of phase one has been valued at 723,000 by the city's building department. The estimated demolition of the exterior walls and roofs has been calculated to be 47%. Should the applicant receive project approval, phase two can be applied for no sooner than one year after phase one construction is complete and the project is final. Phase one of the project includes improvements to the living room, dining room, kitchen, family room, addition, and bedrooms and bathrooms. And phase two would include future improvements to the garage and bedroom and bathroom number three. If the project is categorically exempt from CEQA and as detailed in the draft resolution, staff finds the addition and remodel to maintain a proportional relationship to the site and neighborhood. The 14-foot 6-inch tall building height is consistent with other one-story homes on Peninsula Road. And the addition is setback over 50 feet from the lagoon to minimize the structure's mass when viewed from neighboring properties. Staff recommends the commission adopt the resolution granting design review and recommends approval of, to the city council of the revocable license. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions for staff? Marcia?
Since the revocable license, since phase two includes the garage and the extra bedroom, should the revocable license be done then with the garage?
That's a great point, I, I would say yes, and I would ask Rebecca to-
Yes, I think if they're proposing new improvements in phase two that are associated with the revocable license, then it should go in phase two.
So I have a follow-up question on that. The fence is in the revocable license.
Yes, I follow that as well.
So.
I, if it's going in phase two, we certainly can ask them to pull it out of the-
So just to give a little background on this is, is that a revocable license comes with your plans to the commission. We review it and we make a recommendation to city council to approve it. City council has started to take a different approach to revocable licenses. And one thing that they don't like, and they have actually turned down revocable licenses, is for any fence or structure to be in the revocable license. And so I believe that you should be aware that when you come back to ask for your revocable license, any fencing that is in the revocable area is going to have to be pulled back to your property line.
It looks like there's just a corner, so it, it looks very feasible to pull it back.
Yeah, so just so that you know. Because there's no sense in us saying okie dokie, go to city council and then them have to say no. We know they're not going to approve it, so we just have to be upfront about that. And in fact, they had a meeting last night discussing it even further, so it's going to be under tighter scrutiny going forward. Thank you. Any other questions, sorry?
I do have one.
Please.
I'm a little taken back that we are discussing this phase one and phase two. I thought that anytime a project comes up before us with a FEMA restrictions, that we could only look at it as one project. And see, and have the applicant present us with what they want to do. Not to have semicolon, but on phase two, we are going to do this and that and so on. That I feel that this project definitely is phase one and phase two, and I thought that was really not a kosher thing to do. Am I wrong?
Well, I think we, we have phase two in there so we can look at it holistically as the entire project. Phase one is what's under review tonight in terms of the design review scope of work. And they would have to come back for phase two, provided it qualifies as Planning Commission review or a design review exception. Can you hear me, sorry?
So for now, from now on, we would be looking at FEMA restricting projects coming in front of us. Most often then, if they do not want to raise it or go under the height limit or, or not having to raise it, we would have phase one, phase two, phase three.
I, I think it's just there for context, we're only looking at phase one. Phase one is what's under review tonight.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but somehow it's played into phase two and I'm just wondering if that is proper.
I don't, I mean, played in, how, I mean, you're looking at phase two to understand the whole, what they want to do to the house. We're not approving phase two.
And I think part of it, Nan, is they, they backed up from it.
Yeah, I, I know that, but, but wouldn't FEMA, FEMA suddenly came in here and say, wait a minute, what's happening here?
But we're only going to issue the building permit on phase one, we're only looking at the cost of construction on phase one. We've done the FEMA worksheet only on phase one. We are, we're looking at it at phase one, but given the, the scope of what the Planning Commission does, I think we've in the past had second phases in reports and in plans so you can understand conceptually what people want to do with their houses.
Okay, I just thought that it was not a, a way we should do it, but I might be, yeah, mistaken, sorry.
I think what she's trying to say is that I think one of the FEMA requirements is, is that we we are to enforce the FEMA requirements. And so I think that's just what she's questioning, that this is very clearly presented as a phase project. And I think she's just concerned that it could-
Sure, I understand that, I think back to Kevin's point is they, they had to back out of it, right?
Yeah.
So now, in terms of the purposes of tonight's review of this project, you can get phase two out of your mind. Phase one is what we're reviewing, phase one is what we're reviewing under FEMA. Phase one is what the findings will have to be made for. Phase one is what we'll be issuing a building permit for, should it get approved.
Okay.
I just wish we didn't call it phase one, just the project or the proposed or something.
Call it the project.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
The project.
Anyone else? Okay, if we could hear from the applicant, please. You'll have 10 minutes to present your, the project.
On, there you go.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Marshall Schneider. I'm the architect that's been working with Helen and Dave, the owners of 43 Peninsula Road. Thank you, Sammy, for describing our project by the numbers. I want to share several of the design elements that we carefully considered during our process. First, we spent a lot of time carefully considering the proportion of the lagoon side elevation, as this is the area that is seeing the most work. We looked at the proportion of the vertical elements, the windows, doors, and walls, and the horizontal elements, the trellis overhang, the planter, the screening, and the roofline, and worked to find a harmony that keeps each element in balance with the whole from the exterior and the interior. The planter and grasses also soften the presentation of the rear facade to the lagoon and greatly reduce the reflection from the windows on the water. We looked at the depth of the overhang and its height above the top of the windows and doors. We used the trellis to soften the overall aesthetic of, with its thin elegant profile, and also looked at the shadows it casts on the wall below. These shadows soften the look of the wall and bring life to the facade over the course of the day and through the seasons, as well as provide shade in the summer and sun in the winter. Second, we made it a priority to work with the existing materials in locations where we are not changing the exterior of the home. By working with the existing siding and roof lines at the existing home, we can reuse the siding and eaves. To facilitate this reuse of materials, instead of recycling or landfilling them, we have opted to paint the existing portions of the house a dark gray color. This darker color will hide imperfections better than a lighter color. Most of the portion of the house that is painted dark faces the interior yard. The portion that faces Peninsula Road is well screened by the existing garden and vegetation to remain. In fact, the existing home now has a very dark stain. Sorry, let's jump ahead here. I lost that slide, okay. So the portion that faces Peninsula Road is well screened by the existing garden and vegetation to remain. In fact, the existing home now has a very dark stain on it, so the overall look from the street will not be significantly different than it is today. Third, we really dove into the concept that we could make the new portions of the home and the existing portions work in harmony without being the same as one another. By painting the existing to remain a dark color and applying a lighter finish to the new elements, the history of the house becomes an element that can be understood in its outward appearance. The new portions of the home will be a warm light tan color. The soft wood tones at the entry overhang will welcome people to the home and make a natural transition between the dark and light portions of the home. I'm sorry, I don't have. Here we go. So the same wood finish will also be used in the slats of the trellis elements in the rear to tie the stucco and wood siding elements together. This material and color combination is very similar to these images containing the same finishes we are proposing in our design. So just to backtrack a little bit, I mean, the, the concept is that the, the front of the house remains very similar to the way it is now. We're painting it a darker color. And then the idea of the sort of stained wood wall at the entry is to introduce a new, maybe a little bit more contemporary element. And then the transition really happens when you walk in and through the house, the back of the house obviously is much more contemporary and has a very different aesthetic. So we were kind of excited about having the history of the house read through the aesthetics. The concept of highlighting the idea that the home has a history also expresses itself in the massing. The new elements adopt a slightly more contemporary look with flat roofs and simple massing, while the existing portions retain their simple pitched roofs. The fact that the portion of the house viewed from the street stays as it is, while the entry inherits a new material hints at the transformation. And was, as one moves through the house to the rear, the transformation reveals itself more fully. The linear shape of the lot and the way the house is situated on the lot allow for the melding of the old and new in a subtle and natural way. Finally, I want to highlight the fact that our added space for a comfortably sized primary suite keeps the more private spaces within the home away from the lagoon, as shows in this diagram here. This gives occupants a sense of privacy while also keeping the massing of the home, keeping the massing of the home more open on the lagoon side. Instead of presenting a wall of structure to the lagoon all the way across the property, the relief in the rear wall massing maintains a sense of openness across the rear facade. As I hope is evident in my description of our design process, we were very sensitive to the context of the home and worked to develop a coherent design that adds to the texture of the wonderful neighborhood that is the Belvedere Lagoon. As evidence of this, we have the support of the neighboring property owners on both sides across the street and across the lagoon. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for the?
Thank you. Thank you. Could you just clarify for me which portions of the trellis have been taken out? Is it just on the side or?
Yeah, so this is probably the best image I have, but if you look on the right, as I look at the screen, the side of the addition, so the addition is shaded darker. Only the portion that runs up and down on the page that it, that protrudes into the setback on that side will be removed.
Okay.
There's a piece of the trellis along the front as well. So in this one, you can see that rear massing. We have a trellis over the door there, that will stay there, but the piece that projects out to the right here and runs down the side of the house will be removed because it's in the, it's actually in the setback and it's not an eve overhang.
Yeah, okay.
And one more thing I actually forgot to mention here, based on the input we got while the commissioners walked through the property, we're actually proposing three trees in planters, two on the deck and one behind the pool there, you can see. And so we're, we're happy to add those into the project to kind of soften the look of it. Both when you look at it sort of from the right in this image and, and see into the courtyard, there'll be a tree there, and then one to the left of the, the front of the house, and then one sort of tucked into the back of the courtyard to soften that as well.
What, what kind of tree?
So we're proposing lemon trees in planters. They're citrus Meyer lemons. They grow, I think the plan says there, I can turn this in, they get to about six to eight feet tall.
Thank you, go ahead. You have some lighting fixtures on the plan. Is the, is the idea that those are in the trellis, or are they on the front of the?
So they're actually set probably halfway between the wall and the front edge of the trellis, and they're dead lights that shine directly down to light the, the deck in front of the, the doors.
Okay, so they're fixed in the trellis?
Fixed in the trellis, yes. And they're downlights.
Okay.
They're not aimable.
Thank you.
I think they're eight.
Between eight and 10.
In the back, and let me look at the plans. Yes, we do have some back there as well.
Maybe, I have a follow-up question. So, I mean, what number of lighting fixtures are necessary from a safety standpoint? I mean, essentially, I'm asking, is there a way to reduce the number of lights, especially on the Ford mass?
Yeah, so I think by code, you have to light the area outside of an exterior door. On the south side, the, only the center section of the door to the left there actually opens. So conceivably, we could have potentially two lights that provide light in front of that door. And then two that are in the trellis in front of the door out of the primary bedroom. And that, that would be kind of a minimum. The intent of the lights are just to, to make the deck more usable in the evenings.
Yeah, sure. The concern would be for the people across the lagoon, which is the light pollution that that could throw off. And so it's hard to tell from those fixtures what kind of light pollution would be produced by those lights, especially the Ford lights. So that would be one consideration. And then also, as it relates to lighting, what are you thinking in terms of interior lighting? Because that also can sometimes be a cause of light pollution, especially given all of the glazing on those two masses, but primarily the Ford mass.
Yeah, so we haven't talked too much about interior lighting. My sense is, so the window on the right-hand side in this elevation is the dining room. I imagine there would be some sort of decorative fixture over the table there. The rest of the space to the left is, is living room. So I imagine that's probably some sort of recess cans downlight that sit above the top of the door header and would be aimed downwards, so less light visible sort of between the top of the door and the floor where the light actually shines.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Marcia?
The, the portion of the roof on the lagoon side that actually is in the setback, is it possible, is that the portion of the, of the trellis that comes out on the roof? Is that the part you're referring to?
That's actually in the, in the setback?
Yes.
So I, I'm a little confused. Do you mean the part that we've removed because it's in the setback?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the portion of the roof that's on the lagoon side, not, not on there.
Yeah, so if we, if we look at this diagram, the dark dashed line that's sort of curved through the living room and dining room portion of the project, everything below that is in the setback. But it's legal non-conforming, and we're, we're increasing its height by less than the four feet allowed by code.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you could lower the roof a little bit to decrease the non-conformity, but you're saying that you're within our code now?
Yeah, I believe the code allows for a four-foot extension, and we're doing a two-and-a-half-foot extension vertically. We're not, we're not doing any horizontal extension. We're leaving the footprint the way it is.
Okay. Thank you for the trees. I think that will, will really give some nice screening.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you. Everyone good?
I have one question, and I'm sure this is for the building department and building permit and all that, but on your pictures of the present home on A 1.1, no, 1 point, yeah, 1.1, the picture of the foundation in the corner on the, on the second picture on the top part, you see the foundation of this building, and it literally looks like homemade crumbling cement. And I'm just wondering if you're talking FEMA replacement and cost and so on. Have you had somebody look at the foundation of this building? If it, because as you are so close in, in the money on, on trying to skirt in here on Phase One.
So we have not had a contractor look at it. I, I, I have not actually looked at that closely. I could do a little bit more investigation, but I, I'm not sure that that's a, like a structural crack through there. I'm, I'm just looking at the same photo you are. It almost looks like a, like a, like a joint between a footing and a slab potentially. I don't know. We would have to do a little bit of investigation, and that, no, we haven't had a contractor look at it.
Yeah, no, it, it just looks so old and.
Oh, has he looked at it? Oh, okay. So the contractor that has looked at the project and given us some preliminary numbers, who I believe is on Zoom, he was supposed to be, may have looked at that.
Okay.
So we could potentially.
Yeah, no, I just don't want you to have surprises like, whoops, we have no foundation.
Anyone else with questions?
One more question, too. Your, the, the air conditioner and the pool pomper on the east side of the house, the east side, so are those, did those have soundproofing around them?
So I, I, it's been a while since I've looked at that. The, the units that we're choosing, we haven't chosen them yet. We have a note on the plans that they'll, they'll comply with the sound levels at the property line. So depending on what we choose, we may need to do some sort of enclosure there.
Okay.
But we haven't, we haven't detailed that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak on this project? Claude?
Good evening. My name is Claude Peraso. I live at 41 Peninsula. I live just to the, I believe it's the east to the subject property. Just wanted to start it off by saying that both Dave and Helen have included me in this process since day one, which has been a long time, and they've been incredibly thoughtful in bringing me into the plans, getting my input, finding out what I liked, what I did not like, which I think is very impressive. If I could draw a map and kind of sketch out the perfect project that I would love, it's this one right here. First of all, I love it. I think it looks great. I'm probably the most impacted neighbor. I live on the side where it's kind of, it's going to be the, the open side where the, the pool and the yard is. And the way they've designed it has been incredibly thoughtful, very, very low impact to me in terms of the roof, the two-foot increase of roofs. I don't have a problem with that. The windows, I, actually, I think they look fantastic. There's a window on the side, which is new. I have absolutely no, no objection with that. I don't think you can really see it from the lagoon, you know, from, on the other view, but I have no impact with that. The trees, the lemon trees, I love. I don't know if they noticed or not, there is one lemon tree already, which I always go over and, you know, put some lemons, so some more lemon trees are, are good. I think they discussed some trees along our fence line. I would prefer not to have that because it really does block my, you know, my view, my light. So I'd rather just have that open. But other than that, you know, the color that they have here, I think, was great. The way they designed it is great on the lagoon, and I personally 100%, hope you guys approve.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom, Nancy?
Yes, I have one. Jill Barnett, just a minute, I promote her. Jill, you can speak.
Hi, this is Andrew and Jill Barnett. We're here together. We first like to thank the bank commission. You guys, as always, are doing a great job. We're impressed by the intensity of your investigation, your commitment to the entire process. So again, once again, we applaud you. Next, we'd like to echo a lot of what Claude has said. Helen and David have been wonderful. We're directly across the street from them at 50 Peninsula Road. And as Claude said, they have included us in every step of the process and have been sensitive to any questions that we've had. The project has a minimal impact on, on us, virtually none. They've also been very good about keeping the story polls up, which I think is a very good thing to do because it allows everyone to see, and there is almost no impact. So it's a wonderful project. It's sensitive to the neighbors, and I strongly recommend that it be approved. We have no objections, and in fact, are quite supportive of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Nancy? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission to discuss. Claire, would you like to start us off?
I would love to start. So I read the staff report.
So I read the staff report and met with the architect and walked the property. And I would first would like to say how much I appreciate the owners staying transparent with their neighbors throughout the planning process. It's such an important part when you're going through this routine and especially on the lagoon. So I thank you so much both for for being there for your neighbors. I think the architect and the owners have done a great job with the new plan, keeping the footprint within the overall lot space. The new flat roof gives the home a more current visual look and fits better with the surrounding homes in the area. I have no issues with the materials picked for the house. I think the stucco siding, wash stained wood, windows and siding, sliding doors in the metal clad wood graphite gray will add a great new fit with the roof for the for the more modern finish. I was going to say I wanted to add trees and planters, but that's happening, so I don't have to do that. So I'm very happy with the process and I can make the findings for the project.
Thank you. Mr. No Seidel?
Thank you. I've actually had the opportunity to talk to the applicant Helen over a period of time about the house. And I've walked through the house and seen it in detail with her and talked to her about her aspirations. And so I'm happy to see that it's now here in front of the commission. I know it's been a bit of a journey because it's been in our packet several times before. And I know you had to go back and sort of scope it a different way based on what the current rules are. But I think it's a good design. I concur. It it looks nice from the outside. I've spent a lot of time on a paddleboard, you know, in that vicinity of the lagoon. I think the height's going to be fine. It'll be consistent with adjacent properties. But, you know, I also want to add to that. I think that, you know, just from my tour of the house, with you understand, it doesn't really live like a contemporary house. And I think that the planning that your designer has done is really going to address some of the, you know, functional issues that you have in the house. And it will be a much better home when you get this project completed. So I will be able to make the findings in favor of the project.
Thank you. Marcia, please.
I just want to say that it's so nice to have. I think it's a perfect example of a successful project with with neighbor support. And that's so nice to see. And if we had more of those, it would make all of our lives a little bit easier, I think. So that's really nice to see. I think all the materials are really appropriate and very good looking. And it is really actually quite fun to go into the house because when you enter, it's like you're going through this secret garden. And then you come out and you have water and the lagoon. So it's it's really a nice feeling. I think the house is very appropriate for the lagoon. And it certainly does need updating, which is what they're doing and keeping really the bones of the house. And definitely improving the outdoor area. So I really don't have a lot more to add, but I can make the findings for the design review.
Thank you. Commissioner Burke?
Thank you. Excuse me. I would echo what the other commissioners have said. I think it's a very nice design that will deliver you a lovely house for your family. And I think it's also very sensitive to the neighborhood. The only question I had, I raised before about the exterior lights and if none of the other commissioners have the same concerns, then I will pass on pushing for that. The only other thing is we need to make sure that we either condition the removal of the trellis or they submit revised plans, just so it's memorialized. But other than that, I can make the findings.
And the lighting is always subject to final review. So it will be reviewed by the the chair or the vice chair and the appropriate amount of lights would be approved.
Great. I'd push for seven instead of nine.
Okay, I'll make note of that. Commissioner Hart?
I have done what all the other commissioners have also done, gone to your place and looked at it and so on. And I understand that you have come to this final design by living there, feeling the house, feeling the property, knowing where the sun goes up and down and and neighbors and so on. So I can see that this is a long way for you, having to wait this this many years, actually, to to see your your plans and future coming in front of us. And I echo my fellow commissioners' applaud on what you are achieving here. My only concern is the one material on the front of the house, which is just glass. And talking to your architect, he said that he thought he could take some of this just expansive glass wall facing the lagoon. But it doesn't seem like any of the other commissioners are concerned with that. So I will say, like Commissioner Burke, I'm not going to fight that. I I'm just expressing my thought that I think maybe a little less glazing would have been my preference. And also, I do share his concern for the lighting. We use never to allow complete washing of walls with light. And here, the the lights in the trellis above will definitely wash the walls and the very reflective window panes towards the lagoon, especially when you add the ceiling lights on the inside. I think the light pollution will be pretty substantial from this otherwise beautifully designed home. If it wasn't sitting in front of water, I would say more light, the better. But I think unfortunately, it will reflect onto neighbors. So I would also, for the final lighting plan coming up with planning commission or with the planning staff and chair, try to minimize some of those trellis lights because you really do not need that many to make it safe. The plantings, I think, are very appropriate. And I think the the much smaller pool and the spa is a fabulous addition to this swimming. Yeah, the whole side yard is just a big swimming hole. And I think what you're creating now is really tasteful. You will be able to use most of your deck and so on for entertaining and just open air, which I I think is very important. And the tree additions are great. I don't think that the lemon trees are going to be that big. That sounds very generous to say eight feet, maybe 10, 15 years. But you you will get your lemons, which is great. Maybe one of them could be a more evergreen. That would be a more rounded, soft tree, but nothing important either. So I can just congratulate you to a great design and and I can make the findings.
Thank you. Vice Chair Johnson?
Thank you. I agree with what's been said. I'm very supportive of this project. I think it's been well done. The design, the process you went through with the neighbors, I think it's all just a great example of what we hope everyone would do or wish everyone would do. I I won't belabor what's been said. I agree on the lighting. I think it can be cut back a bit. My biggest concern is just how close you are to your FEMA number. And I would look at your scope of work and maybe adjust it because I think you only have about 7% cushion. And I don't think that you want to be in a position where you have to stop your construction and raise the house or I think it would be a mess. So just think about the scope of work there and maybe getting it down. I don't know what a comfortable number is, but maybe it's a 20% cushion. But otherwise, I think it's a great project and I agree with what's been said, so I can make all the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. So I also visited the site with the Mr. Schneider and prior with Helen Rengren. And I agree with everything that my fellow commissioners have said, including Commissioner Hart, that my concern also was the use of a majority of a material on one plane and that being glazing. And in, but there's not support to have that changed. So with that said, I would also like to say that it's, we all show concerns because we know how things go. But a lot of times, these things have to wait till it goes to building, especially, you know, around the cost of what's going to be done because that's when they're going to have their structural engineer come in and say what needs to be done. And then at that point, they're going to have to, if they go over, they're going to have to pull things out of their current project and look at another project to do that. So that is going to happen at building. And can we do a a condition to make sure that there's some scrutiny on that?
We have a section in our code that it has to comply to with. We won't issue a building permit if if they come in and their cost of, their valuation of the project goes up based on a new foundation or something along those lines. But we typically don't add an extra condition.
Okay, so then I think the only condition that we need to probably add is the, that that trellis on the side setback was removed, just so that it's clear since we're approving these plans. Well, that's in the, that's always in, it always says final landscape and lighting plan. So we'll deal with those things when it comes back, after they get their building permit. Pardon?
Before they get their building permit.
Oh, before they get their building permit. Okay, so. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt the resolution, pardon me? Resolution granting design review for phase one of the residential addition and remodel at 43 Peninsula Road.
No.
Not phase one, just call it the project, please.
The project, that's right, for the project. Okay, I'm second.
Corrected for the project.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion two, please. May I have?
Are we going to do that? No.
Oh, I said there was a condition. No, the revocable license is in the future.
Continued. To a future date.
Yeah, the revocable license.
Yeah.
A different project.
Different project.
So motion number two should be continued to a la- a future date. So that's it. Congratulations.
On your project.
Okay, our next project up is 46 Lagoon. May we please have a staff report?
Thank you again, Chair Karpik and members of the planning commission. For your consideration is an application for design review for exterior lighting, landscaping and entry gate improvements at 46 Lagoon Road. The residence is centrally located on a flat 9,400 square foot parcel in the R1L zoning district. The property is developed with a two story home and is adjacent to other single family homes to the east and west. The project proposes a new entry wall and gate at the right side of the property. Or green walls. One water feature with floating steps and a new prefabricated spa. The project will also include new concrete paving, steppers and reconfigured steps and planer walls throughout. Rendering shows some of the proposed improvements. The entry gate would be metal with a black brass finish and the concrete wall would have a stucco finish in a stone color. The project proposes a variety of new landscaping, including 16 palm trees to 50 feet tall. The project would include 12 23 inch tall path lights, three strip lights at the floating steppers and four step lights leading to the dock with two at the concrete seat in the front yard. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And staff recommends the planning commission adopt the resolution granting design review for the improvements at 46 Lagoon. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I I'm a little confused about what we're approving tonight because there have been some changes that don't reflect here. And the green wall on the plan is on the left wall of the entry, not on the, and the new photos you sent us today have it on the right of the front door. I believe, or is it both? Maybe it's both.
Perhaps we can have the.
Is it both? Okay.
It might, that might be for the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah.
And all right.
I I believe you're right because they also took out the steps over the water, so yeah.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for staff? See none. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you so much for seeing us tonight. I know this is a, I guess I've been on planning commissions and I know the commitment it takes to do this and thank you very much. I'm Pete Peterson, landscape architect. We initially applied for a considerably different project about a year ago. And one thing led to another. People's schedules and engagements affected focus on the project. And so it went through some iterations and we we pulled it, pulled some things back and we've come back in. So the the scope of the project has gotten a little bit smaller. And the focus of the the client has brought some things to to our, to the forefront. And one was the floating steppers in the water feature. Not necessarily high heel friendly. And so that that's one of those things that kind of comes out of a process that we thought we'd nailed and didn't. And so clearly, that's one thing that got dropped. And I'm I'm fine with that. There are some other items along the way that have fallen by the wayside. However, the the thrust of the design, the entry from the street, the sightline down through to the water has been sort of the core of the sort of progressive realization as you come into the property. Those features are pretty, pretty much drive the design. The the plantings are tropical in nature, but simple and contemporary in form. The spa around the backside, that that's sort of, sort of the the central entertainment area for for the family, that those walls open out into that that main patio and lots of plantings between them and their adjacent neighbors that they open out to. And then you can see how the existing fire pit area and slightly elevated area off the back of the house makes for very, it's very conducive to sort of how that mix of family use that I think is going, makes this quite successful. Really, I I don't feel like I need to take 10 minutes to, of your time to go through this. But I'd be glad to answer any questions regarding the plant palette or how things are organized on the site, if you'd like to pose them.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? Ashley?
Thank you. Can you just clarify for me the front gate? So it's, is it the, is it lit just at the bottom? Is it, or is it actually the ring illuminated?
The ring is slightly illuminated with a strip light that.
So it's like inside this?
Give it a glow. Yeah, it is, it can double as a handle. So it's, it has a handle, handle on it, but that will give it a soft glow.
So the lights are on the handle?
Then we have just a downlight at the numbers and that's kind of it for our entry lighting. It's very subdued.
Okay, so the, the lighting is on the handle of the gate?
It's on the ring.
It's on the ring. Okay. Is it also at the bottom of the?
No.
Okay.
It's just on the ring.
Okay. All right. Thank you. On the lights topic, is the spa going to have any lights in it?
This spas have lights in the water generally. We're not planning on any illumination of the spa, except for lights in it. If personally, I kind of like a dark spa and a quiet spa, but there are, there are options for that.
And were other locations considered for the spa?
Yeah, we went through three or four different locations. We felt this was most conducive to the way they're going to live in the property.
Okay, and then the water feature out front, so the, the steps have been removed. So now you just have basically a square rectangle.
Yeah, well, those are square pads and they're modulated by river rock. And so the idea is it's just the geometry changes to reflect the, the geometry of the reflecting pool.
Is this going to have any sort of running water? So it's just a pool?
Reflecting pool. And it's the, the green wall on the, on the wall to the right of the front door, this is a really quick sketch model, but the idea is, is, you know, as you walk in, you'll get a mirrored view of the green wall.
Okay, so, so as you're walking across here and you've got the water on the left, you're not, there are no gaps here. It's stone.
No gaps.
Yeah, okay, all right.
That, that, that fell on the way. I really liked it, but I got out.
Thank you.
Nana?
Yeah, the, the light, so the light in the gate, the ring, is not embedded in the metal. It sits on top of it.
No, it is embedded in a shroud. That circle is a shroud where that is tucked into it. You, you.
So it's flush, the gate is flush.
Yes.
The gate is flush.
The light, the light is in that circular shroud and that, that projects off the gate about an inch and a half.
Okay, so it's not flush?
And it's, it's, it's.
Sticks out.
It, the, the ring sticks out, but the light is set in, so you, you really can't see the light source at all. It's tucked back in there.
Okay, do you know the wattage of it?
I think it's three watts per lineal foot. So a six-foot circumference, if I do two pi r squared, it's going to be around 20 lineal feet at three watts. And, and those things can be re-statted. Now, what we're looking for is just a very soft suggestion of form. This, this circular element that sort of sets you for the, when the door opens, the, the view to the water. So it's, it's not, it's not a splashy thing at all. It's very, the intent is very subdued, like.
Okay.
And it's, it's not on the, the lagoon side and there's, you know, so this is a, it's sort of, we do have some sconces on the building at each side of the garage door. It does throw some light, but this is, this is our, and of course our downlight for our numbers. The intent is this is just going to be a kind of little buzz or a very soft element.
To, to ask the same thing as Commissioner Johnson did, if the spa, what other locations were considered against one fence or further back on the flat entertainment area in front of the?
Yeah, it really, that spot is where you get the view about town. And notice where the fire element is. That's where you get the view of Mount Tan. That's where you get your sunsets. That's, that's the, for lack of a better term, that's the money shot, you know, that's, that really has the, the, the location that is something that we, we felt like that is, it was the best there than say over on the corner, up the, up the screen or, or back in the other area. It was, seemed that when we went to the side on, down the, down the sheet, it got even more prominent. This is, this is down at the lower level and it's kind of pocketed in to the existing stairs and walls.
Could, could it be further pocketed down instead of having it 38 inches sitting up on top? Because it becomes really a prominent thing for all the neighbors. Yes, they have.
Quite a bit of planting between the paving there and, and, and the water's edge. That, that is a planter there and we do have quite a bit of plant material in there, softening that, the presentation.
Yeah.
So we, we felt like this was kind of position A for it and we felt it was best.
Okay.
And we have doors that open up, so it, we, we, we got, take, pushed it back about as far as it made sense for the shape of the spa.
Okay, nothing further.
Anyone else? Marcia?
Sammy, can you bring up the view, the elevation from the lagoon showing the hot tub? Yes, so it, it doesn't appear that you have a planter on the lagoon side.
I, I think that's the problem with these, these renderings is they really don't have the, the topography that is really expressed there. These are, and the, the plant material choices there, that it's not really reflecting that very well either. There is, there is plantings at the base of that palm tree and that small tree there. That's a, I believe that is a citrus.
So you have, you have a planting or planter box or planting on the lagoon side of the spa?
That's correct.
Because you can't see it from this rendering.
It's just not depicted well and I apologize for that.
Okay, so that will give it some screen, some screening.
Llamander breeze, it's a, you know, the frothy sort of grassy thing that, that we're.
Okay, and that can be approved later in the landscape plan.
We'd like to.
I, it was mentioning that the shed is being removed, that, that, that's on the side of the house that encloses the air conditioner.
There's an air conditioner for a server there.
Okay.
And it's getting, it's receiving a, an acoustical shroud.
Okay.
That keeps it.
So it's going to have a.
Yeah, it's going, it's going to be surrounded, yes.
And where is the, where's the motor for the water feature? Is there a motor for that?
Actually in the bottom of the, the water feature itself. It's a submersible pump.
Okay.
And we, we have our, in a, in a, in a vault, close to where the air conditioner, where that, the.
Right there.
Unit is, is, it's below grade in a vault and that's where we use our ultraviolet water. It's water cleansing system.
Okay, so what you are, what you are proposing tonight is the green wall is to the right of the front door and also to the left of the entryway when you come in and also the steps are gone going down.
The steps are gone going out and, and, you know, that, that green wall at the, at the front door, that's a definite. I'm having a conversation with my client about the one that comes down the alley.
Okay.
So I'm hoping it stays. So we know, we know how that goes.
We actually are only approving the landscape plan, so to have all these changes, it's hard to know.
That, again, the plan is, we have submitted a plan and we'd like you to act on that plan. I'm being just forthright about.
Okay.
The, the, the ongoing negotiations with the, with the client and how things go. You, you, you do this, Marcia, you know.
Those are all my questions. Sorry, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
So I noticed that you are showing water lilies. Is that going to be?
In the water feature.
In the water feature. Okay, well hopefully you won't have raccoons because those water lilies won't stay there very long.
Yeah, fuzzy deer. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to give it a shot.
Kevin?
No questions?
No questions. So I think most of my questions have been answered, but I'm still trying to get my head around this lighting on the ring because we generally don't do strip lighting anywhere and especially anywhere that it can be seen.
Well, there's a, a home that I worked on, on what is it, Edgewater, where there is a shroud along the top of a gate that washes down onto a ladder.
So something that has been approved in the past doesn't necessarily get approved now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That might very well be the case, but I was hopeful that.
So it may have been, yeah.
Lighting would, would be something you'd consider.
So.
And it's up to review anyway, so if it doesn't work out, you can say no.
I think the code stage has to be downlit and covered bulbs. We don't specifically say strip lighting. I'm not saying that this.
I know, but usually the strip lighting is.
But if it's covered in the shroud of the.
It's hard to imagine how that's going to look. That's.
I think it'll just be like a glow.
Actually, I think it's really interesting. I think it will have a really interesting look and the light is only on the street. And I, I think it's very.
Anyway.
Unusual.
So is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? I'll open up. See none. Is there anyone on Zoom, Nancy?
Nope.
Close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bring it back to the commission to discuss. Nana, you want to start us?
Sure. I have really been struggling with this and I reread and reread the guidelines of plant choices and so on. And I have to say that I don't think Belvedere Lagoon has ever been considered a tropical or paradise kind of lagoon with the tropical, just tropical plants everywhere and especially palm trees that, and I really looked them up. These, what are they, 14, 15 palm trees that are going to surround or are proposed to surround this house? We are in an area where it's redwoods, oaks, you name it, evergreens, California natives and so on. And here we have a house that definitely is wanting to stand out as a tropical paradise. I have a really hard time with that because I feel these palm trees that, according to the book, it says that, yes, 11 of them can grow up to 50 feet and three or four of them, or maybe it was more five, can grow up to 60 feet, but it also says that in central California, they will probably only go to half, 30 feet, 25 feet. And I just know that when you drive on 37 going east, you see all these palm trees out there by towards Costco or wherever it is and you have, yeah, and you have these things that look like toothpicks with their wigs sitting up there. And I don't see any beauty on it. I love palm trees in their, in their proper location and in San Diego and in LA, but somehow they, to me, they just do not fit and are more, are harmonious with the landscaping around Belvedere Lagoon. So that is my main issue with this application. I've looked at all the other plants. Yes, there are some birds of paradise and stuff like that, which I think interspersed with other plants are definitely very acceptable and they blend in and maybe add a little splash of color here and there. But to try to transform a whole lot into a palm tree paradise kind of looking thing is not something that I can read in our guidelines and for that reason, I cannot make the findings for this landscape plan.
Thank you. Vice Chair Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. So I I, it's interesting. I, on the whole, I think this landscape plan, it, it sort of makes sense to me based on what's already there. I also had some reservations or questions about all of these palm trees and it's, it's a fair number of them. It is a tree that really does stand out quite a bit. I, I'm open to hearing other perspectives on this. I think that having some interspersed with other, some, with other more sort of local native looking plants might help, might help kind of soften the whole thing so it doesn't stand out quite so much. I, I, I also, I don't want to redesign here, but I you have kind of a wet, damp, shadowed entry. And to add another kind of damp, cold element there with the water feature, I don't totally understand it. I, I understand it more as like a, a white noise feature to have some sort of fountain. I might think about making it smaller. Again, I'm open to hearing other points of view on that, but on the whole, I think the rest of the planting is okay. There is an area in the back where you've got, we talked about this, where you, I think we talked about a door. I don't, I didn't see it in the plan. It didn't come up, so I think it might be nice to add a door. You're doing all this work back there. You're going to have a really nice seating area and it's a shame not to be able to go from that bedroom or that room, whatever it is, out to that little seating area. So I think that would be just a really nice thing to add there. And I, I don't know about the gate. I don't, I'm, I'm curious to hear what other people think. I think it is very attractive. Is the lighting something that can be taken out? Can you just have the gate if? Okay, so that's an easy thing to remove. Okay. Yeah, I, I'm, I would like to hear what others think on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burke?
Thank you. I actually, I really appreciate the, the plan and I think it's a, it's a really thoughtful enhancement to the current property. I had two concerns. One is also the palm trees not, I, I don't have an issue with them per se. It's just the height. If they really will grow to 50 feet high, which is what's indicated in the plan. I think that would be out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood and I would be concerned about that. So I would wonder whether or not there's another, if you really want a palm, is there another dwarf palm or something that isn't going to potentially just throw the house out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood, which I think would be unfortunate. So that'd be one question there. And then the second question is, I mean, while I appreciate the design element of the ring light on the gate, I think when you go up and down the street, it would be unusual and call attention to itself. And I don't think that's what we are aspiring to do with, with entries along, you know, densely populated street like this one. So I would advocate for removing the ring light, but other than that, I could make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Slemaker?
So I agree on some of the process with the, my fellow commissioners. I, there are already a lot of palms planted in the front. All along.
They're not permanently planted. They were, they were planted without permission. So they're, they're still in their pots.
Okay.
And that's why there's plywood, thank you, over because you would dip down. Somebody could trip. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about, why they were already there when we hadn't planted them yet. We hadn't approved them yet. So I actually think the concept of the illuminated ring is nice. I, my question was how much light it, it gives off. I think the subtlety of it could be really nice with the, the entry gate. I like the, the new concept of the new wall and gate. I think that it, it improves the overall look of the home and gives them more privacy to the owners. improves the overall look of the home and gives a more privacy to the owners. And I'm kind of on the wall about whether we do the light or not, but I, I think if it was low, low voltage light, that it might look fine. I'm glad you did away with the, the floating steps because I was worried about it becoming a hazard to someone, especially with the high heels thing. But, but I think the water feature, I'm fine with the water feature, and I, and I love the fact that you're doing the, the wall. I think it's gonna bring in more green to that entry area, which I think it needs on that because it's pretty stark right now. And I think the overall landscape plan is fine. Possibly maybe some of those palms are not as tall. Maybe that's a good concept, but otherwise I, I did want to have another planter box there on the backside of the spa so that when you look at it from the lagoon side, that, that there is more green there, but otherwise I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Seidel?
I think my reaction to the plan is, it's a good plan. I recognize generally what you're doing with the planning. I, I think my initial reaction to the gate is generally favorable if it's well executed and not bright. I think it could be an interesting thing. There's always the risk that I don't know if you can really control the level of light output from the strip lighting, and if it became something that was you know, very noticeable when you went down the street, I think that could be a concern. So that's not exactly a clear sentiment, but I think I could be okay with, with going with the gate as an interesting element. I do share some of the other commissioners' concerns about the planning palette, particularly the palms. There are a few palm trees around the lagoon. They strike me as being out of place. They're not native here. So I don't know if there's a way to, I, I guess I'm sitting on offense, so to speak. I don't know if I can make the findings if there was a way to condition it to alter the, the palm plantings in some fashion. I, I think I could support it, but probably not exactly as it's presented here in the packet. So that's where I am on it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lasky? I saved the best for last.
Yes. I was actually looking at this plan. I was kind of worried that you might know something that we don't know about this new climate that we're going to have. But you are relating to changes in the climate, and actually, they are, there are quite a few palm trees in Belvedere, all along Beach Road near the yacht club, and there used to be one at the very end of Golden Gate a long time ago. So I don't think they're out of character in, in that way. I, I actually, I think it's a really interesting presentation and landscape plan. I, I like it. I'm kind of worried about the 50-foot palms. You might want to look for some that don't get quite as tall. And I actually think the gate's really interesting, as long as it doesn't look. I agree, you don't want it to stand out, that that's the focus when you go down Peninsula. But I think it's a very interesting concept, and when it opens, it lights the pathway also. I, I am confused about the conditions that needed to be added to this that are different than what we are approving, so I think we need to add those conditions to design review, so we know exactly what we are approving. So I, I can make the findings for design review with possibly some changes in the size of the palms, which can be done when the landscape plan is approved.
Okay, thank you. So.
Excuse me, I just have one. And also with the planter box on the lagoon side of the spa, which I believe you said makes a, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I've visited the site and reviewed the plans, and I also feel that the palms aren't appropriate. I mean, I've driven down lagoon and seen people walking on the sidewalk and getting whapped in the face with the palms at the height that they are now. And, and I think that their, their mature height doesn't fit within what our, our code is asking for. So I, I have a problem with the palms. I also have a problem with the ring light. Because in the plan that was up a few minutes ago, and it showed the strip light, it wasn't exactly in that same use on a ring on the inside of a whatever. It was more on a staircase where it just threw the light all the way down a, a set of stairs. So I'm, I'm not in favor of the ring light because I think it's, it's, as several commissioners have said, it just doesn't quite fit in to what we, we approve. I mean, it's an interesting concept, but if you drive up and down our roads at night, they're they tend to be darker with just lights like over the garage, like you have on each side of the garage door and a light over by the number. And so we don't have a lot of illumination on our streets, and I just think that, that would bring illumination to the street, and it would also open up the door to further illumination that would completely change what the city feels like at night when, when we're living here. So, and I agree with the planter. My neighbor across the street put a hot tub in, and they put a row of boxwoods in front of it. You don't even know it's there. So I agree that there should be a planter in front of the hot tub to, you know, just shield that from view. And so with that, I wouldn't be able to make the design review for this on the basis, and I want to circle back to Vice Chair Johnson to get her final view.
Thank you. So I could we condition it with a change in the trees and the light, or is it, are, are the changes significant enough?
It sounds like everyone would like a condition that there's a planter in front of the hot tub. I've lost count on who's okay with palm trees or versus who's okay with palm trees. There, I think there's 15 or 16 proposed. You could consider reducing the amount of palm trees. You could consider allowing eight palm trees and eight different species of trees. You could also condition that there's no light in the ring, or that prior to final building permit approval, the chair has to approve the wattage of the lights. I mean, there's, it sounds like there's a lot of ways you could go here, and I, I'm sorry, I've lost count on consensus. I, I think Commissioner Seidel hasn't fully committed either way. I'm blaming you for me not being able to count.
I don't know if you have a count going. I am not comfortable with the palm trees. I'm okay with other elements of the plan, but I am also in agreement on the palm trees. I think those are problematic.
So no to the palms is Nana, Ashley, Pat? You three are okay with the palms. Commissioner Seidel is?
I prefer to see an alternative to the palms.
To all the palms.
So should we just ask them to, should we continue this and come back with a different plan, with different landscaping? I mean, because it's gonna change, it may change. I mean, I'm not, I'm not a landscape person. You're happy to do that? Okay. And then.
Chair Karpiat, may I add one thing I forgot to say when it comes to lighting? On page L3, the, the middle picture has, it looks like spotlights above the doors on both levels in the middle of the building, and they are definitely just lighting up the whole front of that part of the house facing the lagoon, and I think they should be eliminated or put low down to light up the terrace.
Oh, up here?
Yeah, there are four of them. Oh, there are lights.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it says existing, downlight. Okay, maybe you can.
I mean, it sounds like maybe our options are either to continue it or to take a vote or to condition it. It sounds like the palm trees, if I'm counting correctly, there's four that are against the palm trees. So the palm trees would be four who are against the palm trees be okay with the rest of the project if we conditioned it with no palm trees and no light in the rain?
And, and the planter in.
And the planter in front of the hot tub spa.
But can I ask one, I mean, just to push back a bit on my fellow commissioners is, so are we saying that, or are those four individuals saying that palm trees are not acceptable in Belvedere any longer? Is that what we're? So would this decision be communicating that to the community that we're no longer comfortable with people planting palm trees here?
I think it's saying that this plan with the palm trees is not, I mean, I can't speak for everyone, but I, I see it as this plan with these palm trees doesn't work.
This plan with this number of, you know, potentially 50-foot palm trees, you know, personally, I don't feel like we have to say no palms and eliminate it from the palette, but I think that the height and the prevalence of them seems too predominant. So some rebalancing in my mind of how the plan would work. I don't think it's a blanket prohibition against planting palm trees in Belvedere.
As an accent plant or something, but to have them as the main.
I don't know if that's a.
So could it be conditioned on?
It could be a condition.
Reduced by 50% the palm trees, or Pat and myself can review the final landscape plan, or I, I mean, I'm just trying to.
But I think it's the, the, it's, it's the palm tree and the height, so it's not the reduction in the number.
Species of palm tree.
Do you want me to reopen the public hearing, Mr. Peterson? Okay, all right, thank you. He's suffering behind you.
Uh, really, I had that, that thing, that twist in the seat. Again, a, a 50-foot, that's a climax tree, and redwoods go to 300 feet tall. A damn few do. And these, this is the exact example of a palm tree. That's a mature stand. What we're looking at there, they start, the brown trunk is half the size of that. So that's probably a 25-year-old palm tree in that rendering. So these things, at, at 50 feet is when they're gonna come down. That's when you cut them down. And, and they don't look particularly good when they get that spindly either. I mean, and, and so I, I, I just can't help but think the, the number of them, I think, certainly open to reducing the number, but that Kentia palm, it's one of the prettiest palms in the marketplace. It's better looking than Canary Islands date palm or all these other palms. It just has a very graceful quality to it. And yes, in their youth, Pat, yes, they, they're low, and, and those have not been maintained or skinned up yet because we're not sure they're gonna stay. And so they will be maintained where they're not, the, the fronds aren't in peoples, hitting people that are walking by or riding their bikes by. They will be maintained. This property will be maintained very high level. And so the, the intent here is to create, yeah, it's, it's sort of a unique thing. Yes, it is more tropical than, than native. But there's a lot of that going on in Belvedere, and so I, I can't help but think that we can, we can have this be something that is a part of Belvedere, borrowing from elements in Belvedere in order to make it a lasting and, and contribution to the neighborhood.
Thank you. So I think we're back to the same question.
Is the commission prepared to move forward with, with the planter in front of the spa, reducing maximum height of, you know, palm, of most or all of the palm trees and rebalancing so there are fewer palm trees? Because you could leave the implementation of those two later conditions to either the chair and vice chair or the chair and the community development director. Let's take action tonight.
Somebody get a new title? I, I personally, I will vote that I'm not comfortable with the palms. I, I, I just don't see them fitting in. So that's my feeling. We know how you three feel. So, I mean, I would like to see a different palette. And if, you know, there were smaller palm trees somewhere along the way, but out front, I just don't feel they, they suit the surrounding neighborhood. It does, just doesn't fit in.
I feel they're beautiful as accent trees, but to have a whole property become so tropical that the only bigger elements are palm trees, that to me is too much.
So.
And are you saying, but I, I think it's still, I'm getting a mixed message. So is it no palm trees, which is, I feel like that's what you're saying, Pat, but you're saying you'd be comfortable with.
Oh, I can see one tree in one corner of the property and another one maybe at the other end of the property. Yeah. I can see as an accent tree, but.
A minimal.
Yeah, minimal.
I, I think that it, maybe we should have a continuance and having come back with an adjusted landscape plan that would incorporate maybe some palm trees and some other plants. That might, that might satisfy
Yep.
everyone.
I'm sorry. So let's go ahead with a continuance because I think it's, it's a cleaner way to go than to try and figure it out here, half the, not, not half.
Yeah, and I would also suggest perhaps if the applicant's open to it, is showing what that ring light would look like at night, if that's possible. You know, some photos are, just so the concept is clear to the commission.
Okay. All right. So are you willing to accept that continuance? Or do you want to vote? Okay. Can I have a motion to continue the item to a future finding commission meeting?
I, I move to continue 46 Lagoon Road to a future time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed.
Just so I go on the record.
Okay, we move on to our final project, 11 Tamapayas Avenue. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Karpiat, and members of the plan, commission.
I'm sorry, I'm recused because I live within 500 feet.
For your consideration this evening as an application for design. For your consideration this evening as an application for design review to remove a mature eucalyptus tree at 15 Tamapais Avenue. 15 Tamapais Avenue is a 49,000 square foot parcel in the R15 zone, zoning district. The site contains a single-family residence in multiple groves with mature trees and vegetation. The site has two eucalyptus groves, and at the northern grove, one eucalyptus tree is proposed for removal. The applicant and owner of 11 Tamapais Avenue, Sarah Crump, proposes to remove a 63-inch in diameter eucalyptus tree from the adjacent property at 15 Tamapais Avenue. Ms. Crump would plant a eucalyptus live oak in a 24-inch box on her property to replace the eucalyptus tree. Ms. Crump provided three arborists reports which supported the eucalyptus tree's removal. The report stated that the eucalyptus was an undesirable species, that the tree's tilt compromises its structural integrity, and that the tree has a high damage potential. On April 9th, uh, of this year, the city's arborist reviewed the eucalyptus and found the tree to have good vigor and presented a low failure risk. Uh, according to the report, one limb had a higher likelihood of failure, but did not target structures or high-use areas. To warrant design review approval, a project must further the objectives and criteria set forth in the Belvidere Municipal Code, Chapter 20. While most of these factors apply to structures, the following criteria should be applied to a tree removal application. These criteria include preserving the landscape in its natural state, minimizing the removal of trees, cut and fill, and grade changes, and landscape plans that are compatible with the character of the site with materials native to Northern California and Marin County. Staff has received letters in support of the project from property owners at 17 Tamapais and 27 Tamapais Avenue. The owner of 15 Tamapais Avenue, Todd Stanton, submitted a letter supporting the eucalyptus removal on the condition that work be done entirely from 11 Tamapais Avenue and that the project plan be put, a protection plan be put in place to not damage any of the surrounding plantings. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA, and staff suggests that the commission hear from the property owner, receive public comments, and considering the information, two separate resolutions have been provided for consideration, one for approval and one for denial of the requested application. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sammy. Any questions for staff?
I had a question. Is, do you know the status of the new tree policy that City Council is working on?
Um, yeah, there's still, we're still working on it. Uh, we don't have it sort of on a future agenda.
Got it.
Not making a council's January agenda at this point.
Thank you.
See no other questions? I'll open it up to the, um, public hearing. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Crump Collins. I'm representing my father, Walter Crump, who has lived in our family home for 55 years. He's been a contributing member of the community, serving as a volunteer firefighter for 13 years, nine of them as the city's fire commissioner. I grew up here and have wonderful memories of life at 11 Tamapais. I'm making plans to move back here once my youngest graduates, um, and goes off to college, uh, in two years. And as a young child, I personally witnessed a large eucalyptus limb fall in our front yard, just about 20 feet from where I was playing. Uh, it sounded like a bomb when it hit the ground. Um, this experience has made me fearful of these trees, and I would really feel safer if we were to replace it with a more structurally sound species that is native to this area. And as a side note, my visiting grandparents, um, were there, never left the house, left the house after the incident. Uh, we were no longer allowed to play or walk under or near the large eucalyptus trees. Currently, the tree poses a risk to my 91-year-old father, Walter Crump, as well as to six-year-old Edward and eight-year-old Callahan and their parents, who are here tonight, getting past their bedtime. Their parents, Casey and Addie Falvey, who helped take care of my father. The, um, tree overhangs a house and garden looming with branching that is suboptimal. My father witnessed many eucalyptus trees aflame during his firefighting years. All of the arborists who have visited the site have noted it has bad structure. Ben Anderson also noted it has a girdled root essentially choking off the growth. The tree has been pruned several times, most recently at the expense of our neighbor at 17 Tamapais, Dr. Michael McDonald, who was concerned about the safety of my father sleeping below it. I have three arborist reports that are not, that are not favorable about the tree's location, its structure, nor its species, uh, one of which my father submitted to the town in 1993 recommending its removal. The town should have a binder about two inches thick every time he came down here to speak about this specific tree. This tree is non-native invasive species that can grow up to 180 feet and requires special removal equipment the larger it gets. Marin County Arborist recommends its removal as noted in the city of Belvidere in Chapter 8.28. Eucalyptus are classified as undesirable trees due to their rapid growth and flammability, noted in both 8.28 and 0.080, Section A and E. To summarize, it's the wrong kind of tree in the wrong location. I also attached to my application a Department of Education report from Australia, the tree's native land, um, as a tree to avoid planting near a school ground or building as there's a problem with its sheer size and weighty of its limbs and the risk that they may unexpectedly fail. And they have a picture of the eucalyptus tree with a stamp in red saying, "Avoid." Alicia and Todd Stanton, the current owners of the tree, have given their permission for us to remove the tree at our own expense. We are requesting the town's board's approval as the city's arborist, Sadie Julin of Arbor Science, denied our permit exemption. She, uh, never visited our property at 11 Tamapais to view the tree on our side as it leans over our home, and she was not able to see the girdled root, um, from the Stanton side of the fence. In my opinion, her report lacks a thorough, thorough investigation and fails to consider the hazards posed to the current residents of our home. Uh, she did not, wasn't able to note the effects of the resource depletion it's having on our surrounding landscaping, which some of you are able to view, this extreme angles of the trees growing towards our home to escape the shadows cast by the eucalyptus tree. She also did not note or view the distressed maple tree growing directly beneath the large eucalyptus that will have a better chance of survival without the eucalyptus stealing its resources. I plan to replace the tree with a coastal live oak or some other species that the board likes a different tree on our property to the east. Um, and as this native species is not only less susceptible to fire, but also offers ecological benefits, supporting our local wildlife and contributing to the natural beauty of our town. I'm here with my architect, Alec Wilson, and my arborist, Robert Bavero, and either of us would be happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? See none? Is there anyone else here in the audience that wishes to speak on the subject?
How's it going? I'm Robert Bavero, certified arborist, native plant enthusiast, and also a member of the California Native Plant Society. Um, I just kind of wanted to come here and kind of address some of the things I noticed with the tree. The girdling root, uh, there was a narrow crotch on the right side of the eucalyptus that had included bark. Uh, included bark is something that, uh, creates an improper branch union, so it's a very likely for failure. Um, luckily, it's not hanging over any structures. It's also inhibiting the native growth of a big-leaf maple, Acer macrophyllum, and it's also inhibiting the growth of coastal live oaks, Coryc� saccharifolia. One other thing I noticed that wasn't in either of the ports was, uh, the branch to stem ratio on one of the branches, um, you can see in Figure 2 of, uh, Ben Anderson's report, um, the, the branch ratio is a little over half, uh, something that certified arborists recommend is that number be lower than half. I'd say it's somewhere close to your two-thirds. What else did I see? Uh, eucalyptus have shallow roots, and when I viewed the tree from 15 Tamapais Avenue, um, I actually noticed that there was a, um, moderate, uh, risk of the tree falling. Uh, if you stand from directly behind and look at the lean, um, the trunk will miss the house, but it looks like the branches could very well clip the house and also hitting the deck as well, which gives me more of a moderate, uh, than a low likelihood or no likelihood of, of the tree causing damage. Um, as we have stated many times, eucalyptus are highly flammable, um, and the oils also inhibit, uh, native plant growth. That's pretty much all I have. If anybody has any questions, uh, I'd be happy to take them.
I have a question. So, so you were able to look at the tree from both sides, from both 11 and 15?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, I was.
And so if you were to only have viewed it from 15, do you think you would have made a different assessment?
Um, from, from Todd's property?
Yes. And so you just pretend you never saw it from the side of 11? Do you think you would make-
No, I would have had a, a better, uh, the same assessment. I, I had a better view from, from Todd's property.
So from, from just 15, you would have had the same assessment?
Yes, just 15, yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Can, can you explain that more? So if you looked at it from 15, you had a better experience. Does that mean you thought the tree was in better health and should remain, or?
I, I had more of a negative look, uh, on the tree's aspect of damage on the property of Sarah's at, at 11 Tamapais.
Okay.
Uh, looking at the lean of the tree was a lot better to look from 15 directly behind the lean. I could see that the trunk was going to miss the property, but, uh, branches extending out to the right would hit the, the corner of that, potentially, potentially hitting the corner of the house, correct?
Potentially, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a good night.
Uh, I have one question, sorry.
Sorry, my apologies.
So, no, that's okay. Um, so your report's not included? Was your report in here?
My, my, my personal report, uh, I'm reca, uh, representing Marin County Arborist, uh, but Ken is the one who wrote the report, but I, I attended the, the view with him.
I got confused with the names.
Sorry, I'm, I'm as an F U, as you can tell, Bavero. We do a lot of work here in Belvidere, we love it here.
Okay.
So, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else? See none, anyone on Zoom? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission to discuss. Commissioner Burke?
Thank you. Yeah, I, uh, reviewed all of the materials and I went and visited the site on both sides, 11 and 15. Um, I do think though, you know, sort of related to that, I, I am feeling like the Arbor Science reports, because this also happened on 101 and 104, which was before the commission, um, a few months ago, it, they feel very light. Uh, and I think removing trees is obviously a very hot topic in, um, our community, and I think maybe we need to push, if, if that's our designated arborist, to, to provide a more fulsome report, so we feel that we're more, um, informed with their opinion and, and why they made the assessment, because it's pretty brief, it's only like a sentence or two, so, um, I, I do think that the other reports from the other arborists that you added, uh, were very helpful, and, uh, I am not an arborist, and so I can't, um, uh, put a thumb on a scale and say, well, I think my opinion is stronger than theirs in terms of the safety or the hazard that these trees might cause, and so I can make the finding to remove the tree based on, um, their assertion that they present, uh, a clear and present danger to, um, the neighbors.
That's a movie, you know? Commissioner Slaymaker?
So I agree with, uh, Commissioner Burke. I also walked, um, the property on and looked at it from 15 and 11 Tamapais Avenue. Um, and I, to me, it is definitely leaning over toward the roof and in a heavy wind, lot of rain, I think that there's a possibility. I mean, I love trees, but and I, I think in this situation, with these circumstances, that, um, that it should be removed so I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
I did the same thing. I looked at the tree, but I even went further. I went down on West Shore today and walked back and forth looking up at it and not just at this tree that belongs to 15, but also the other full grove of eucalyptus. And, um, as, uh, Commissioner Burke was saying before, that we've had an issue with other big eucalyptus trees and what they have become kind of a, uh, not classic trees on Belvidere, but they definitely have been here longer than most of us. And, uh, they do add something to the island of Belvidere and even down here on, on the lagoon. But then again, I feel that thinning out a grove of eucalyptus is not bad. It doesn't, uh, totally change the natural, um, feeling or setting of these huge trees. I think the surrounding, uh, plantings that have been done in years past, and they have strived to, to become big maples and other trees around the base of this eucalyptus and have not been very successful. That if the removal of this eucalyptus, um, if that did happen, they would definitely, after, uh, the tree gives up, have an, uh, advantage to, to be nourished and hopefully thrive. I looked into all the reports and other reports on, um, maybe just pruning, uh, pruning the tree down, uh, pruning the limbs that are overhanging the property line, uh, and reshaping the tree to maybe save it. Uh, but in every instance, and I've seen it around my own property, uh, that you cut the eucalyptus, you get a candelabra. Sometimes it's great if you want to hide a neighbor's pool, uh, but sometimes it, that might not be your intention, and then you just get more growth, more care, more litter, more seed pods, et cetera, which unfortunately, the eucalyptus tree is known to, to, uh, give us all very generously. And I would, in a way, hate, I can't really believe that I'm saying this, but, um, I feel like this tree, the removal of it will not change dramatically or not even much, the whole feeling up on that side of the island. I don't think it's gonna be a negative thing. I think the sunlight will, will, um, be able to come down on the maple tree and all the other plantings that are on the south side of, of, uh, the Crump residence. And especially now that the city arborist chimed in at the 11th hour saying that, uh, pruning would not be something that they would recommend either, uh, to maintain the tree in a better shape, uh, for the future. So with that, uh, I have to say that I would not be opposed to have the tree removed, and I can't believe I said that.
It's okay, you're forgiven. Commissioner Seidel?
I visited the site yesterday, um, and looked at the tree with Sarah. Uh, I, I feel like I can understand, um, the applicant's concerns about the tree. I mean, it's always a little bit speculative, you don't know when or if it's going to come down, but, um, just looking at the tree, this is not a tree that I feel like I would take a stand to preserve, the applicant's willing to invest a substantial amount of money to remove it, and they'll replace it with something that I think will ultimately be preferable, something more native, an oak tree. And I think getting light in there will help the other trees grow as well, so I will be able to make the finding in favor of this.
Okay, um, and I also visited the site. Um, I'm, uh, agree with what everyone has said, and I'm in, um, Commissioner Hart's court that I can't believe I'm saying this, but, um, I can make the findings for the, uh, removal of the tree at, uh, 15 Tamapais. So with that, can we have a motion? Someone?
Aye. If I can find it.
I feel like my packet was missing an attachment with the motion.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, where's the motion?
No, I, I know.
There's no motion because we gave you two resolutions. So you can move to approve the design review for the removal of the eucalyptus tree located at 11, 15 Tamapais.
So as stated.
Yeah, I move as stated and I second as stated.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Congratulations. Okay, and that ends our meeting. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday.